Move on to our, um, to our first presentation item of the night, the first business presentation item of the night. Our from Seattle City Light.
Good evening. I'll, uh, I'll introduce them as your public works director. Um, we have a number of them. Team members from Seattle City Light as part of the 2024 city council work plan. This was requested. So I, before I introduce, um, introduce them, I just wanted to say we work very closely with them on a number of issues. Throughout the city of Burian and they are always very responsive and are always willing to work with us. To help us solve whatever problems we need to. So we appreciate their cooperation and, and collaboration. Um, I'm going to introduce the general manager and CEO, Don Lindell, and I'm going to let her introduce the rest of her team.
The red is good. Okay, got it. Thank you for the training. I appreciate that. My name is Don Lindell and I'm the general manager and CEO for Seattle City Light. And I'm so excited to be here tonight to talk with you, to you about electricity, which has got to be one of the coolest things ever. So we are, um, we are excited to be here and with me tonight, I've got Craig Smith, who is our customer care officer. Andy Strong, who is our environmental engineering and project delivery officer. We've got Dulcina Law, who is our key customer manager. Catherine Eisenberg, who is the director of customer experience and Sandra Ball, who's the manager of customer service. So we've got a short slide deck to share with you tonight and then we will be happy to answer any questions. How many engineers do all right? Okay, we have an agenda. This, these are the four topics that we will cover. And we're just going to dive right in with this, uh, fun fact slide that looks at our, uh, the, the people, the area and people that we serve. In a quick, in a quick view, this is 2022 data, so it is a little bit out of date, but we have about half a million meters. And we serve about 10 million megawatt hours to our, uh, the communities in our service territory. And that includes, um, about half a million customers. We have 441,000 residential customers. But our 51,700 commercial customers actually use a lot more power than our residential customers do in total. One of the coolest things about this utility is that in 2005, we became the first utility to achieve 100% carbon neutrality. Not only in our generation, but also in our operation. So what that means is, well, we do occasionally buy. Undetermined power off of the grid to ensure that we've got enough power to keep the lights on, on really cold days or really hot days. We, um, use carbon offsets to, uh, carbon recs to offset that power. But we also use carbon recs to offset our travel. So if we are taking, uh, plane trips, we offset that. If we have, um, for our large vehicles that. We don't have the ability to have electric vehicles for our bucket trucks and our, um, digger derricks yet. Those that we offset the carbon that we use there too. So we are, um, car, uh, fully carbon neutral. And this is our power mix. So the, um, big blue area that, that's about 48% of our total. And that is our, uh, city owned hydro. So that's the, uh, uh, hydro generation that we own and operate. We've got about 41% in our green area and that is Bonneville Power, which is primarily hydro. It's a little bit nuclear. And a little bit undetermined because they, they sometimes have to buy power as well off of the market to, uh, meet the need. We've got about 1% wind and about 1% other, and the other is landfill gas and biomass. And then we have our market purchases and that's about 9%. So this is a look at our 2023 resource mix. It says estimated because we actually have to get our mix, uh, verified by the state department of commerce. And they are still working on our verification. So it could nudge up or nudge down a little bit. And this is a beautiful picture of the Evergreen State as well as a little bit of Oregon, Idaho, and a teeny smidge of Canada. And this, these are where we have our energy resources. So the blue dots on the map are the hydro that we own. The little red dot way up at the top is, uh, some hydro we have from treaty rights with British Columbia. The black dots are the Bonneville Power, uh, long-term hydro contracts off the Columbia, the mighty Columbia Basin. And then the yellow are the other long-term contracts that we have. So I'm going to dig into our finances. Now don't blaze over on me because this is really cool too. So we have, uh, we base our, um, budget off of our load that we expect to have to meet. And so this graph, if you look on the Y axis, we've got the average annual load. In average megawatts and on the bottom, we've got years and those years range from 2010 up to 2040, maybe 2044, actually. The dark gray line is our, our actuals. And so for a long time, we've had load that was either steady or declining. With a really, um, peaky dip there in 2020 when COVID hit and everyone went home and we didn't have the commercial power running. But now we are seeing that power load climb at a pretty steep rate. The light gray dotted line, uh, on the bottom, on the bottom from 20, about 2020 on through, or I guess it's from probably 2022 on through 2040. That is our guess two years ago on what our load would look like. What a difference two years makes because now that blue line is our estimated and expected load. So what's making that change? Well, a big part of it is building electrification. Which has tripled. Our forecast for building electrification has tripled in the timeframe. And then a lot of it is also transportation electrification, which has gone up 70%. It was already fairly high, so it's a big chunk of that number. And then we've got population increasing and that's the rest of it. So that, that explains why we're seeing a much larger expected load now. In fact, two years ago, we predicted that we would need to add about 400 megawatts of power. Over the 10 years after 2022. Now we predict we need to add 1,800 megawatts of power over the next 10 years. So it's more than quadrupled. In addition to that, we will be looking to conserve almost 120 megawatts as well. So we've, we've got our work cut out for us. So as we, what we then consider is, um, what are the costs that will go into our rates? And in this graph, this shows a graph of, uh, a, um, of our expected rate increases over this time period. And I'll get to a graph that says this, so you don't have to remember it, but we're looking at 5.4% in 2025 and 26. And then 5% in each of the outer years as an estimated placeholder. And the, the drivers, the reason that our costs are climbing are shown in this graph. The first is power costs and that's the red bars. Um, that is the cost of the power to meet that increasing load that we've talked about. We have had all this beautiful hydro power and it has melted the bulk of our load. But we don't have hydro power for the additional 1,800 megawatts that we need. We're going to be buying solar and wind and batteries, um, and also some new firm base load. And firm base load is a power that's available around the clock. So hydro power, we can call on it as long as we have the water, we can call on it any hour of the day. Geothermal is another, uh, firm base load. Small modular reactors are firm base load. Those three are the clean choices that we have today. Certainly there are things in the works like fusion. Um, I know there are four companies in Seattle working on that, but it's not viable yet. There's hydrogen. You hear people talking about hydrogen. We would want green hydrogen. And it takes three megawatts of energy. So it would take three megawatts of green energy to make one megawatts worth of green hydrogen. So it's a cost factor of four. It's very expensive. So you think, well, why would anyone do that? But the reason is because you can store hydrogen and make it a firm energy source. So we can use it whether the wind's blowing or the sun's shining. And we will also fill in with some batteries. On this graph, then another cost pressure for us has been our labor, our, um, market wages. So we went, our, um, employees went three years without being pay adjusted. And that was a big problem for us. We are down six crews. We are down 26 engineers or were at, at our, uh, peak, um, deficit there. And that really slowed the work for us. We weren't able to get people's power turned on more as quickly as possible. We weren't able to keep up with our streetlights. Um, so we really needed to, uh, pay people at market. So that we didn't have people leave to go to Tacoma or Snohomish or Puget Sound. They don't even have to move to go to those other utilities. And so, um, we've made that adjustment and this is the path that we believe the market will go for labor in the blue. The yellow is capital recovery. And so this is the capital program that, um, we have in place to replace. Our aging, some of our aging equipment and also to cover what we expect to have to, um. Pay to keep our dams licensed and the capital improvements that we'll need to do there. If I were to say to you where I think we fall short in the outer years, it's in that yellow section. We currently have 330 miles of direct buried cable. All of it is old. All of it has passed its useful life. And, um, if we, if we bury the cable in conduit. Then when it gets old, all we have to do is connect new cable to one end and roll it through. And it's a very fast replacement. It's easier than overhead replacement. But there was a vendor about 60 years ago and he did a good sales job in the Northwest. And he sold us all direct buried cable. To get that stuff up, we gotta dig up the whole thing. So we've been replacing about five miles a year. At that rate, it would take us 66 years to replace it. It's untenable. We cannot wait that long. It is the single biggest contributor to our declining reliability. So we will be looking at a $2.1 billion project starting in, um, we think 2026. That'll go for about 10 years. That's not in that yellow. So I just put that out there because I'm just advertising that we've got a problem we're gonna have to take care of. And then the other, um, which in little teeny letters, it says taxes and that's the gray. So that shows the increase in taxes that we'll be paying. So those are the cost pressures that are driving our rates. To need those rate increases. I wanted to show you this graph because I think it's really telling. On the Y axis here, we've got dollars per megawatt hour. So this is the cost of power. Each of the little blue lines at the bottom, starting from year 2001 and going to year 2024, or this year through April. Each line is one day. So they're all mushed together on this graph. And I show you this because it's important to understand the energy fluctuation costs that we are seeing right now. If we look to the far left of the graph, there's a big spike. It spiked into the mid $400 range. And that was the Western Energy Crisis. That's Enron. That was when they were screwing around with the market and, um, you know, the smartest guys in the room and, and really messed over the energy, uh, market in the West. Then we go almost 20 years of having very steady energy prices. So out of Enron, everyone learned to hedge, we hedged and Martin, the, the price of energy stayed pretty constant. We had a couple spikes for weather, but they were mild little spikes. We come to 2019 and we had the, um, British Columbia Pipeline rupture. And that was a gas line. And of course, we, a lot of, um, companies make, uh, power from gas. And so it really sent a shockwave into the market and we saw the price climb to a thousand, a thousand dollars a megawatt hour. But these last four years, we see spikes every single year. That is climate change. Those are all weather spikes. So we've got California heat waves. We've got the Texas 2021 winter. We've got the 2021 heat dome that hit in the Northwest. We've got the 2022 heat wave in California. The December 2022 cold spell that hit again in the Northwest. The August 23 heat wave, and then this past January's cold spell. Is really difficult because when those weather events occur, they last longer than they used to. They are stronger. And they cover a wider region. So whereas before we could maybe buy. Power from a local utility that wasn't impacted by the regional event. Now we're all impacted and we are having to wheel that energy from farther away. And we're all vying for the same extra power. So it's really important that we, A, budget for at least one weather event a year because that's what we're seeing. And B, that we, um, continue to buy resources that we own, that we can manage and control. And that we can sell into the market of California's having a bad power day and we are not. Oh, and the, the other thing about that, the average for the first 20 years of that last graph, this guy. Was $38 a megawatt hour. The average for the last four years is $80 a megawatt hour. So more than double is what we are having to pay when we buy power off the market. Okay, so that leads us to a look at our proposed, um, strategic plan rate path. And it shows what our rate increases were in 2021, 22, 23, and 24. And then our proposed, uh, what we thought we would do in 2022. But again, with our increased load and the new cost of energy over the last few years. We've had to raise the, uh, rate increase to look at 5.4, 5.4, and then 5% placeholders in the, uh, outer years. And, um, I wanted to do that, then a comparison. How are we doing in comparison to other area utilities? So we've got Seattle City Light on the top and we've got our proposed. Rate increases, um, along with our increase that we took in 23 of 3.4, 24 of 5.5%. And then our projected over the next couple of years and our average. Tacoma Power is doing a little bit better than we are. Um, Puget Sound Energy next year is looking at 6.9 and the following year at 9.6%. Portland General's looked at 18% this year, 7.4% next year, and we don't know the year after. Uh, Snohomish isn't saying yet, so I think they're, uh, still working on theirs. Avista is looking at a 13.8% and a 6.7% again in the timeframe. So every utility is being faced with the same kinds of cost pressures that we are. Um, one thing I didn't mention was the cost of our stuff. So while consumer. The Consumer Price Index has seen inflation in that 9% rate or 9% um, range. For electric utility components, it is in the 30% range on average. But we have some components that are up over 200%, um, more than triple what they were a mere five years ago. So we are hoping to see those prices begin to come back down. They are flattening at this point. To help manage, to help our, um, customers who really cannot afford this kind of a rate increase. To help them, we have our, uh, affordability for all programs. And this includes our 60% bill discount. And this 60% bill, uh, discount is for income eligible, uh, uh, people. And that, um, is based on, is rising from a 70% of the state's median income. To 80% of the area media, median income, which will mean that a lot more people in our communities. Will be able to access our programs. So for example, this change will increase the maximum gross yearly income for a household of three. From 71,000 to 90,000 and still be eligible. Um, so we, um, are glad that we'll be able to offer that. And we are doing a significant amount of additional reach, reach out. While we have seen the, um, customers who are eligible about double from 2014 to 2024. We know there are a lot more customers who could benefit from this, who simply don't know about it. And so we are increasing our outreach on that. I think that was my last slide. I believe Andy has a few slides to, six slides, 16 to 20. We got five more slides. So hang in there. Yeah.
All right. So let's run through some of it. So you heard Don kind of, uh, outline where we are as a utility and some of the challenges that we have. Ahead of us. So what are we doing for Burian in, in particular? You saw the, uh, growing electricity demand chart. Um, that shows a, a, a steep. Uh, uptick in electrification throughout our service territory. So we're really going back into some of our franchise cities and our service, uh, territory overall. And doing, uh, a fair amount of, of grid planning, making sure that we have capacity for the future in certain areas. And, uh, making sure that, uh, if there are reliability issues, we're addressing both at the same time. One of the things that we noticed a few years back is the degradation of the Duamish sub. So we, we're actually completing this year, pretty substantial overhaul of our, our control. And, uh, circuit breaker, uh, infrastructure for Duamish sub. And doing a little bit of, um, feeder maintenance. So, uh, trying to address, uh, an issue early on there for our system. We continue, of course, uh, to service new customers. Um, you know, we see a lot of multifamily. Unit development, uh, in our greater service area and it's important for us to support that. And we have a, a large program dedicated to making that easier for the developers and, um, faster as well. As you all probably know, KC, Ki- King County Metro is, is going through their whole bus, uh, system right now. And trying to electrify that in advance of 2030. Um, you know, the city of Burian, um, City Light. And, and King County Metro continue to hold meetings and plan on the, the one that's local to Burian. We're in the middle of reconducting, uh, a large, um, transmission service to feed that. And undergrounding in support of that as well. Just a quick mention of, uh, our streetlight systems that we have. It's, it's somewhat limited to, uh, around 3,500, um, streetlights total. We are doing a pilot program that, um, is a, a control and outage system, uh, in this area. For some of our streetlight systems. We're trying this in five different areas of our service territory. But, um, you know, the idea is to get out in advance of some of the maintenance issues that we're having. We see substantial copper theft in the areas of streetlight and that's really impacted us for the last five years. Substantial impact. Uh, we've had as much as three and a half miles of, of, uh, conductorings stolen in some of our streetlight systems. We went out and did a replacement and then, uh, 10 days later it was stolen again. So it's a significant problem for the area and one that we continue to try to search for solutions on. Major capital programs that we're, uh, either in the midst of or soon to start. You heard Don mentioned before about some of our direct buried underground cabling systems and how it's reached end of life. Hurstwood is a great example of that. It's about 1.6 miles of direct buried underground cabling that we're replacing. Uh, starting this summer and continuing, uh, till the end of 2025 to, uh, reconfigure that system. And, and bring it up to new standards. Um, and then obviously there's a significant, that's a hard word for me today. Number of, of projects that we're working on with the city of Burian as well. Uh, Southwest 148th. South 140th, South 144th, uh, First Street South 128th to 140th Street Underground. That's all, uh, projects that we're working with you on. I do want to highlight some significant infrastructure that will eventually, um, come to Burian. On our South 136th Street property that we own, we definitively see the electrification of the area. Requiring us to build a new substation. You're probably looking at a decade to 12 years out. But it's important we talk about it now because it's really the, the planning, the, the design. The community outreach that's going to take a significant amount of work in the early years before we start physical construction of some of that. A lot of that's associated with, um, uh, fleet electrification that's coming in. So EV chargers, not only for the residential, uh, customers in your areas, but more the commercial side of things. We see this area of, of, uh, the greater Seattle area as being a, a concentration of that service. And then I just, this is more for information than, than anything else. Burian has a, an undergrounding policy. Um, it works well in partnership between City Light and the city of Burian. But we deal a lot with some of the telecoms and, uh, what we have heard is, um. There is some, um, not reluctance is too strong of a word. But they're trying to figure out the program with, with the city of Burian and, and, and they're pausing on some of their investments currently. So it's, it's something to be aware of and, and if at any point you want to reach out to me for more input, I'm happy to provide what we know of it. But just something to think about in the, in the future. And on that, I think that takes us to the end. Any questions, comments, concerns on anything that you've heard? We're happy to address those.
Well, first of all, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, and it, it's, it's obvious you care a lot about the work that you do. And I think it's also obvious that Seattle City Light is proactive and future thinking. And I think we're all thankful for that. Um, I, we'll, we'll see what questions other folks have. I have a couple of questions, but I'll let other members of council start off. If there's people who have any questions that they'd like to get going on. Councilor Garcia, is your light on? Do you have a question? Go ahead, Councilor Moore.
I'm, I'm happy to start, but I think other people will also have questions that, but I crossed one off because I was going to ask specifically about Hurstwood. And, uh, that, I was glad to hear that. Um, a couple of them are kind of more, uh, can I ask three questions? And then I'll come back and ask the rest of them after other people have had a chance. Burian served by both Seattle City Light and Puget Sound Energy in different areas and, and sometimes with gas and sometimes with electrical, some combination. How do you partner with other utilities and, um, how, how do you create some kind of seamless interface? Where, you know, there's divides in an, an area between what service they receive.
A lot of it's done within our systems operations center. Um, very good relationships between Puget Sound Energy and City Light. I mean, we rely on them for some of the transmission of our power. They rely on us for the same. We partner in regional transmission issues. Uh, we partner in distribution and in outage coordination as well. So, um, our engineers work together on various coordination teams, especially in, in, in shared interest areas. Burian, C-TAC, uh, Renton certainly, where we all, where we had, um, shared services. Did that get to the root of your question?
That did. Um, and in the, in the, the curve where the costs are, or the, the needs are going up. The, the thing you didn't mention that I hear about all the time is AI and other technologies, um, driving up costs. Is, is that a concern?
It is. Let me take that one. It is, let me take that one. It is a concern, um because what we need now are additional energy sources, including rooftop solar. And in order to incorporate that onto the grid safely, we because electricity moves at the speed of light. So we need to have software that can help us integrate that. And we do not have that in place yet. So we've applied for a forty five million dollar grip grant from the federal government. Um, and we're hopeful that we will compete uh for that and then we'll have to match it. We'll actually have to go back to city council and request a um funding of, I think, fifty million to offset that. But that would pay for half of something we're in the hole on right now. We're a little behind on. And then on AI, we're partnering with um EPRI, which is the Electric.
Electric Power Research Institute.
Thank you, Electric Power Res- I can never remember my acronyms. I just call them EPRI and then I get up here and blow that. Um, because in in EPRI, they take utilities um can kind of buy into the research. And we all fund a little bit of it and then we get the results of that. And so we've worked um across the industry, several AI projects with EPRI, including being able to diagnose our equipment. More quickly by, you know, thousands of pictures going into a database that show proper equipment and equipment that's failing. So that we can um, you know, use video to feed through potentially and be able to diagnose that more quickly. And I think there will be a lot more opportunities, fast settlements is another one, so we can quickly balance the books. Um, so we're at the very beginning of that and we are actually doing some ten year planning now, thinking about what kind of workforce we need. In ten years to be able to meet that need.
The other thing that's happening as a result of the sort of the just tremendous growth with AI is um uh the impacts on our load. So data center growth and that's a national phenomenon. We are seeing um certainly more interest uh from the various folks in uh relocating or or locating data centers in in our area. So that's um uh sort of an uncertain part of our of our load forecast in the future. But certainly, uh you know, it's going to be uh it's going to contribute more to our growth. Uh, it's a national phenomena. I mean, we're seeing just tremendous growth in um other parts of the country, down in Georgia, Virginia. Uh tremendous growth. We're not seeing that here. But uh, you know, because but we are seeing some and we're get we get calls on a fairly regular basis where folks are are sort of uh. You know, trying to scope out, you know, locations for for data centers in our service territory.
Thank you. That felt like a two for one question. But I'm gonna I'm gonna power ahead with one more anyway. And and just ask if you have programs to help with um with building envelope and and insulation. Or any kind of um weatherization so that the utility use is there's less load during those extreme times.
Yes, and if if you if you can recall back to the the slide that uh Don took us through. Where that that ten year period where our uh load growth was sort of decline flat or declining. Coincidentally, um Seattle area was once it was we were like the fastest growing uh urban area in the country. But our our load our load was flat or declining. And that was that was due to um advances in energy efficiency, um uh things that happen naturally in the market. And City Light's um, you know, long term investments in energy efficiency uh programs for our customers. Those continue and as this growth occurs, uh we're really going to have to triple down um on that. Both to um address the existing buildings and uh and also to uh try to make the electrified. Uh technologies more efficient as folks convert from natural gas to electricity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Uh, Councilor Motta.
Well, I get excited about AI and some of the things that uh you know, coming down. But uh and I'm happy to see the amount of help that you have and that uh it'll go up to eighty percent of medium. Uh, I think for me, it's more of the everyday things, right? Where there's a family comes home and their light is is broken out. Or, you know, hot areas where we have a lot of, you know, police activity. How do you go about, you know, going out and having that conversation with you all? That that would be one. And the other one is, you know, we have, uh obviously, we can all see what interest rates are going. I don't think people are going to go out, buy homes, they're going to start remodeling their homes. And it does kind of, I mean, I've I'm a I'm a contractor. So it is challenging for just a regular homeowner to say, hey, I'm gonna take this on. And there's a lot of uh victims in being uh basically taken to the bank uh with contractors that just ain't doing what they said they were going to do. And so I'm just wondering on those couple of questions there. Thank you.
Well, just from a, you know, a a materials perspective, you know, Don touched on it a little uh earlier. So not only, you know, for growth and for expansion, um things like transformers used to take. Oh, per medium sized transformers, four to to six months. Now it's eighteen months to twenty four months. Some of the the transformation equipment has uh um cost as much as two hundred and sixty percent higher. Than what they used to because this is a not only a national issue, electrification, but it's a worldwide issue. Uh, and so we're competing with um, you know, basically countries around the world for some pretty scarce goods. You know, uh I I think part of your question talked a little bit about streetlights, is that right? And and the safeguarding, well, we have had our challenges in in copper theft and related. That does impact um, you know, our our streetlight outage numbers. Uh, we're just a little bit under one percent of our streetlights now um have issues, known issues. We really ask people to use the Find It Fix It app if there are streetlights in their area that um are out. Non-functioning, um that helps us focus. But then let's get back to the pilot that we're talking about before. We're really trying to take advantage of of new technologies that are out there. To be a little bit more proactive about understanding where our system might have issues. Um, and and something like that might report it to our crews and our engineers a bit faster. So that we can really respond in a in a quicker nation in in a quicker uh way. Yeah, it's an issue. We feel it every time we get a um a call in that we have a streetlight system that's non-functioning. That impacts us directly because, you know, uh most of us are residents of the city as well. And you're our customers. We we need to be able to respond to you in in a in a rapid manner. And that's tough because we are down crews, we are down engineers and and we're we're in a bit of a recovery uh period from that.
And then on the energy efficiency side, we're in the process now of uh revamping uh one of our residential programs. We're developing a new, what we call Whole Home Energy Efficiency Program. Uh, where we uh hoping to, you know, provide more aggressive um rebates to assist customers who already have ele- um electric heating and cooling. To upgrade their facilities. And then we're going to be stacking those with um, you you know, familiar with the the massive um um uh bills. That were passed, you know, under the Biden administration Inflation Reduction Act. And there's billions of dollars nationally that'll be flowing through um to the states and 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 local areas. Um, for for tax credits. So we're looking at ways to stack our um uh our incentive dollars with the Inflation Reduction Act. Uh dollars for um for energy efficiency equipment and for solar energy. Councilor Garcia?
Go ahead. Thank you. Uh, thanks for your presentation, for your time. This is really valuable. This is really helpful. Um, I want to thank some of your staff. Last year I reached out to um Mara, I think. And she connected uh Dell, Dell or rep for our franchise. So they responded really quickly to an outage issue that I had in our north end of town. So our north part of Burian got annexed. So we were unincorporated prior to being in Burian. Um, it seems to me that some of the infrastructure in the unincorporated areas sent tends to be historically uh more out of date.
Okay.
Uh, tends to be less invested on because they weren't in other cities, didn't have cities. So um. As you look into the grid and investments, um anything that can be done to kind of look into. Uh, areas of the city that have higher need of infrastructure, I think is key. Question on first, you guys have done pretty good on addressing outages. We have them all the time in our neighborhood. Like three times a year, on average, I want to say, staff comes out. It it solves it. Your website is great about saying there's an outage. Um, your crews last year, when I reached out, amazing, it was super rainy. It was one of those storms. So first of all, thank you to being under man and servicing what you have. So that speaks highly of doing the best you can when you don't have that much. But it is worrisome because you're you're aware that we're growing. Planning at the investments. Where's your closest servicing facility of crews to the city of Burian? And what other cities are franchise cities around us? The reason I'm asking that is because we have a big need of, we're about to build and invest. Probably one of the largest infrastructure investments that our city's done into our public works facility in the very near future. And I think that gives us an opportunity to really work in partnership into finding out what that substation of the future looks like. You're looking to invest into future substations. We're worried about AI, all the different futuristic. So as we're looking to invest into it, I think it would be a good partnership opportunity for us to invest into that public works facility. To make sure that if we can have space for crews so that they can be able to quicker service our Burian residents, whatever that may look like. Obviously, we're looking at ten fifteen years down the road. But the reason I ask that is because I want to know what other cities and franchise cities are around us. So that we can make sure when we are growing, because I'm sharing the same concerns that Councilmember Motta shared. And Councilmember uh Sarah Moore. We're worried about our everyday residents. We're worried about, you have great programs for under uh for low income, um elderly. And it seems like you have a great program for developers or uh some sort of pilot program for, you know, the growth of infrastructure. What I haven't seen for everybody in the middle. Like, I think having a robust, whatever that may be, whether it's from the money from the infrastructure. But money to help everyday folks invest into uh their windows, solar. So that they're not caught off guard ten years on the road and then our elderly with fixed income and now they're right. So I think there's opportunity there and just want to see if if you've thought about that, like addressing the middle income normal families.
Right, and and maybe I didn't do a good job in my answer to uh uh Councilmember Mata. But that's what I was trying to get at is we're in the process of of making our programs uh for residential classes more ro- more robust. And so can then looking at ways to leverage the investments that we make in our energy efficiency programs with the dollars that are coming down. From the from the federal government through the Inflation Reduction Act. And those are targeted to um, you know, everyday uh homeowners.
But whatever we could do to work with you, our our amazing rep, our city manager to lead all that, I think would be fantastic. We would love to see that, just that, whether it's helping become a leader in the solar energy, whatever it may be. Let's be very proactive about it because we're all speaking about the same different, same things, just, you know, different perspectives.
We welcome that. Thank you. We welcome that.
And then just facilities, like what other franchise cities were?
Oh, Taquilla. And then unincorporated King County.
So there is a round, okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Uh, this is very informative for me. I'm relatively new on the council, so I'm learning a lot. Um, and it's always a fire hose. So thank you very much for being here. I really appreciate it. And uh, thank you for addressing the questions that the council has. Because, you know, this kind of infrastructure is critical as we continue what we're doing tonight, our comprehensive plan and the future of Burian. And what that looks like, and of course, energy is important to that. I just had two questions, one very specific. Burian has had uh some outages that have been going on kind of relatively regularly. Can you give me a sense of what's causing those outages and um what Seattle City Light sees as um helping to ease those outages? And also, um, I'm curious about security of the utility. So what are you doing to invest in the security of the utility as, you know, AI is an example? But um as as we see that, what do what do what are you doing um to help in that?
Do you want to take the first one?
I certainly can take the first one, yeah. You know, Don mentioned, you know, we have a significant investment that's that's coming up. And, you know, that that covers a good part of of what we're really experiencing for our reliability issues. Our underground system has been under invested in over the years. Um, and when an underground system starts to go bad, it goes really bad. Unlike an overhead line where you can see the tree branch in the line and it you're it's very obvious where the issue is. When we get a uh an outage, an unplanned outage associated with our underground system, it's very hard to find, very hard to isolate, very hard to get to. Um, that is our focus for the future. That is where we're seeing our reliability numbers that um are trending in the wrong direction right now. And um, you know, it's it's both a a a curse and an opportunity for us. Because we know electrification's coming. We know we need to expand our networks or our 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 overall distribution system. Um, and so when we find these bad order systems, we're going to go at it and we're going to increase capacity at the same time. Um, but really, over the next decade, that's our challenge of going through these areas of reliability and and making them better. Um, we're still relatively good in our our immediate area for reliability numbers. But again, we're seeing it just trend in the wrong direction.
And then in terms of security, um, this is an ongoing and will be an ongoing area of focus for us for the foreseeable future. Um, we have taken prudent measures. We've got federal oversight through our NRT Critical Infrastructure Programs. Um, and we, you know, meet or exceed all of those criteria. We also uh um have taken further prudent measures. It turns out that people, um surprise, surprise, are the uh the best vector in to any organization. Somewhere between eighty and ninety eight percent of the hacks are from social engineering or people being tricked into clicking. Um, in some way, shape or form. So we do regular training. Um, we just had one come through last week that got a few people. So we do regular phishing training so that folks can get used to looking at and being suspicious of the emails that we get. And thinking before we click um to let, you know, that's a big a big vector for ransomware, for example. Then long term, I think we need to step back and have um some visioning and planning in this arena. So we are actually changing one of our officer positions into a chief information officer and we haven't had one. We've had a director of IT. Um, we really need an officer focus on the long term for AI. You know, what what should we be doing? How can we best improve our technology and how can we best protect it? So um, we believe it hasn't had that right high level focus and we're changing that now.
And and we're also uh investing pretty heavily in physical security too. Um, you know, making sure the fences around our substations are are supplemented. You know, trying to do the obvious steps that we can to to safeguard our infrastructure from that perspective. Um, and that's a difficult task, of course, when we're constrained and and uh um in space. To really create that distance that we need for some of our infrastructure. Um, certainly going through access protocols and and remainder to make sure that we're, we at least try to be a step ahead.
I guess my question is more cosmetic slash maybe crime deterrence. I've noticed that on First Avenue, you have certain lights that are now more on the yellow-orange dusky. Is that part of the LED replacement side of them?
Hundred percent right, yeah. So when we first started the LED program over a decade ago. Uh, it was really limited what you could get for LED fixtures. We knew this was the future. We knew um that we needed to go um in this arena, both for conservation. Because they're so much more efficient than the high pressure stody- sodiums that used to serve this area. Because they're so much more efficient than the high pressure stody- sodiums that used to serve this area. Um, so much more responsive, uh, greater reliability. But they just, they had that brilliant white light to start with, and those were the only choices you had. Um, now it's a it's a much softer hue or it's a programmable hue that we have available. Um, and it it makes the streetlight system more welcoming.
I have a second follow up then. I know that in the B E D P, we're currently talking about adding more lights to certain areas. Is the changing of those to a brighter light in the future, something that may happen then? Just because I know we're adding more lights as a crime reduction to higher crime areas. I mean, changing out to a brighter light, to me, would kind of make sense.
Yeah, it's it's a balance, right? I mean, if if um, we have to be careful in areas of arterials. Because streetlights are supposed to be for the streets and it's intended more for the drivers than necessarily pedestrians. Um, there are pedestrian lighting fixtures, obviously solely, um, that can be planned in certain areas. Um, so it's a balance between trying to get what's right for theft deterrent. Versus blinding the driver that's um, you know, going down an arterial. Um, obviously happy to work with the city of Buren on what's what the right compromise is there. But just know that there is that compromise to think about.
Any other questions? Because I've got a couple, but I'll wait till everyone's done. Go ahead.
Or do you want to go and then we start off?
No, I'll wait till everyone's done.
Okay, um, I guess, uh, how well does local solar feed into um Seattle City Light? And what changes could make it more attractive to users? Um, as as you hear in Buren, we have a lot of anxiety about power failures. Are there ways that local solar could be. Uh, adapted as as a tool to um help support cities during power failure?
I'll I'll follow you on this.
So we certainly, um, as part of our, um, I think Don alluded to earlier, our our long-term resource plan. And uh, you know, as part of the mix, we certainly were looking at uh uh, you know, at large scale solar. We're looking at batteries, we're looking at wind. Uh, but an important part of our resource plan uh is also. Uh, what we call um other distributed resources, which is, you know, our our local, you know, local solar um and storage. And and then also our demand response uh programs. Um, so we've got, you know, well, in in our resource forecast, um, uh, about, I think, twenty five megawatts of uh. Of local solar, um, so residential and commercial scale. Um, and so we're going to be, you know, laying out some programs. Now we have what we call a distributed energy resources strategy. And so we're working now uh to streamline the the interconnection process, make it easier for customers. And also put together a set of tools and resources to help folks on their full-on sort of solar solar adoption strategy. From the time that you figure out that, uh, you know, you want to make that solar investment. Uh, to figure out how to, you know, work through contractors, um, access any available um tax credits and net metering. Um, and work through the interconnection process. So we're looking at improving that end-to-end journey. Um, and then in addition to that, um, for folks that don't have access to uh the capital. Um, we are developing uh uh community solar uh options where folks can. Um, you know, get access to 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 shared ownership in uh local community solar installations.
Okay, other, you good? Other question? Are you sure you have a follow-up question?
It's it's not a follow-up question, but I I do have one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so it and and it just has to do with the name Seattle City Light and the kind of. Evolution of Seattle City Light started as as a service in the city of Seattle and and then. How how did it become more regional and is there a plan of of acknowledging that in in its name or in operation?
That's an interesting question. We try, we do try to always acknowledge that we serve Seattle, seven surrounding communities and unincorporated. King County. We just sort of have that in our in our speech lexicon, so that I'll have to take that under advisement. I appreciate you raising it.
Thanks. I'd love it to be Greater Seattle City.
Thanks to my colleagues, some great questions and for you guys for taking time. Uh, this is more potentially for our rep. Um, I'd love to find out, won't have the information here probably, but what our average household bill is for Buren. Uh, and if it could be somehow by zip code so that we know what neighborhoods pay what, I think that for me would be very helpful. Uh, as I, we're looking, and you're welcome to stay, we're going to be looking at our comprehensive plan. And this goes into my follow-up question or more of a suggestion. Uh, yeah. Um, we're likely going to, I mean, we have a large goal deficit of house, housing units to build. That's that's the whole region, you're aware. Um, we have one of the most proactive um ADU policies eh in the county. Um, and we're looking to uh potentially take advantage of the. Um, recently passed state um missing middle duplex, triplex, quadplex. Um, to build more density into our, so. I guess the suggestion, because we have the leadership of the city light here, is uh to help us. Facilitate that infrastructure on electricity needs for specifically those two housing units, which we need to. Improve our housing goals, whether it's a solar program specific to ADU additions. Whether it's a solar program for uh multi-family duplex, quadplexes. So that when they do add to their same, the cost on improving that underground, whatever it may be. I think there's a big opportunity there as we're looking to be smarter with the limited land that we have. And improve on to that infrastructure, so I guess.
We appreciate that comment. I mean, we we work exhaustively with the Master Builders Association. To make our processes easier and more streamlined. For that very reason, um, the vast majority of permits that are coming in, building permits in the greater Seattle area. Are those multiplex units. And um, we have to as a as an energy provider, respond to that and be more efficient. And in helping the developers, uh, um, you know, provide housing for the greater Seattle area. It's a definitive need over the next decade and and we're trying to be good partners in that.
Okay, well, that's a great segue to my question. So um, I think one of the goals of uh this council and the city of Buren. Is to find ways to reduce the costs of housing and increase the supply of housing and uh make it a more attractive option for people. To not only build here, but to live here, buy a house here, rent here, whatever it is. Um, so with with that goal in mind of reducing the costs of getting housing online. One of the things I hear from builders and developers um is that it it has gotten somewhat expensive to hook up to Seattle City Light. Um, and and some housing is coming online without electricity hookups. And I'm just wondering if you can address some of those things, because I know, I know, I mean, with costs rising across the board, I understand the costs are rising. But it is making it more expensive to build housing and then to sell it. So could you address those concerns that, because so costs of hookups? And some housing coming online without being hooked up entirely to electricity?
You or me?
Jump in.
Okay, sounds good. Um. You, I I think we've kind of segue around some of that a little bit. I mean, Don talked about the fact that we're still kind of recovering. From um some relatively high employee numbers. I mean, we have been down significant number of crews. We still remain down some. Um, and we're filling in the engineering ranks to to obviously try to meet the demand that's there. It's a national competition because every utility in the country is faced with electrification. So we're all competing for relatively rare resources. Um, and you are, you are hitting that curve where the cost of of cable and conductors. Uh, transformer, switchgear um are significant. They've impacted us. And and more importantly to the developers and 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 the new residences, it's the timeline associated. With getting some of this unique gear. You, unfortunately, you just can't go to an Ace Hardware and say, well, I I want three of these. This is very specialized uh equipment. Um, and it it impacts how we service work. Um, you know, it's it's no question, that's that's our direct challenge ahead of us. More than, you know, the future of of where we are as utility, more than. Um, you know, some of our challenges around reliability and so on. It's that direct challenge that's in front of us now. Where we're really putting the bulk of our of our energy to try to solve. You know, we're working with the Master Builders Association on, well, what's, what what can smart panels do? And how can that help us reduce costs? It's it's a struggle for a utility because, you know, we're bound by codes and guidelines around how we have to develop. Design systems and size systems. Um, it's a challenge around. Where do we put our infrastructure so that it's going to last for generations in a reduced footprint? Because the city is becoming more and more dense. How do you make that affordable? And and how do you still uh control some of these other elements? That's a challenge for us. Being a public utility, we um, we have to get compensated for the work that we do. Um, for developers and related, and we're trying to become more efficient. We're trying to put rules and and regulations. We're trying to uh be more efficient about how we dispatch and use our crews. Uh, along those efforts. Um, but it's, it's, it's just that. It's an extremely hard challenge to me.
And I would say the good, oh, did you want to?
I was just going to add something about the, I I I have a major focus for Don. Um, and for us is on um process improvement. And so we have a, we have a major uh initiative that we call um service to build. That really focuses on our end-to-end um process for um developing um uh a service. Through service connection. And we know that we have some uh opportunities to grow there. Uh, so we've got major, uh, you know, a number of initiatives uh underway now to to improve the efficiency of that process. And we're also benchmarking ourselves against others. Um, that's not going to erase the 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 deficit though, um, when it comes to resources and the cost of of materials.
Yeah, so I was going to go i- in that same vein, saying, you know, we know we've got an issue. We've now um got metrics in place that let us measure our performance and, you know, what we measure, we improve on. Um, and for the first time this past year, for the first time, we have actually come down in our time for since. Well, it's been what, four years?
Been a while.
It's been four, four years where we were continually increasing our time to connection and we've actually come down. So we're on a, I mean, it's it's not, it's not glorious fall, mind you. A little bit of trekking, trekking in that direction. It will take time for us to fully recover. We are, we have to train our um apprentices to be journey level, and that's a four-year process. We have a, a, we cannot fill every slot because we don't have enough journey level people to properly and safely supervise them. You know, we talk about code and the thing with electrical code is it's different than a code that determines how tall your building is. I mean, it's physics. So we know the size of wire required to safely transmit electricity. And we know about how much energy a fourplex is going to use versus a triplex, you know, versus a five over two or et cetera. So um, so and, you know, that the the National Electrical Code just tells us, if you are building this, this is what you need. And so we, when we need to size them safely, because fifty percent of house fires come from. Undersized, you know, or incorrectly sized electrical equipment. We don't want that, right? We want to make sure we're doing it well, as does every builder, right? So so we just, we're on a path. I think we're on a good uh good directional path and we're starting to, you know, we're starting to see that. And then we just need the supply chain issues to peter out and go away. Just much like our developers too, they're bad.
And do you have, um, I'm assuming Seattle City Light has some sort of intergovernmental, like intergovernmental relations director? Or manager of some kind? If there's any, ever any opportunities for us to address anything on our end of the permitting times. That we could do to try to make it go faster, please let us know.
Thank you.
Please have your person, whoever that is, or whatever department you have there, to reach out to us and set up a time to talk about that with us. Uh, it doesn't have to be in a council situation like this, it can be offline. Um, but but I'm always trying to find opportunities to do that so that we can get more housing built and cheaper and more efficiently, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Greater Seattle City Light, for coming.
Thank you all for coming. That's a lot of you guys here, thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your appointment.
Oh, thank you.